I'm going to call the special call meeting of the Graham County Board of Education to order. Mr. Booth, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yeah. Dear National Lord, it's the end of Thanksgiving today, Lord, and we'll get to our long list of thanks for Thanksgiving, Lord. I want to thank you, praise you for your grace, your son Jesus Christ who came and died and rose from his sins, Lord. Just thank you for our spiritual freedom through him. Thank you for our faith and freedom, Lord, that men and women who fought and died for that, Lord, just thank you for our veterans. Lord, just let us lead you, Lord, even though these are bad times in the year that we're having. Lord, you know our country is in bad shape, Lord. It's just like I said, getting better, Lord. I just pray, Lord, that it's only through your grace and through you that it will get better, Lord. Not through politics, but through you, just have people realize that, Lord, that it's through your sake and your grace, Lord. I pray that you be with them, Lord, today, the decisions they make concerning their children, Lord, they're precious in your sight, Lord. And then that's, again, that's over noted in the scripture, Lord. I just pray you give them wisdom, guidance, and understanding in the decisions and policies that they've made, Lord, and be with them. And be with their teachers as they get ready for another school year, Lord. There's a lot of uncertainties out there, Lord. And I just pray you be with them and help them and then just, Lord, just give them the grace and wisdom, Lord, and just be alert to years. Lord, they're the ones who are discerning, and it's always going to be anything that goes on, Lord. Lean on your help and lean on guidance, Lord, and just help us be in the right place at the right time to do what we need and have, then, Lord. And again, we just can't thank you enough for what you have done for us, Lord, and just help us keep looking for you and all the things we can do to glorify you and help others. You're the best, Lord. Do some more prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Booth. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda for today with the addition of, under action items B, Graham County health status with Ms. Beth Booth? Do I have a say?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Knight, are there any individuals or groups to address the Board of Education today?
No one that can sign up, sir.
The floor is now open for public comment, period.
I have one gentleman.
Okay.
He wants his hand here.
Come in.
Thank you so much for giving me the, I guess we don't have to have a man come in. Giving me the opportunity to come and speak to you. First of all, let me just tell you how much I appreciate what y'all do. You don't have an easy job, and you sure don't have an easy job in the middle of the pandemic. I'm here today just to, I don't know if I'm asking for a favor or a reconsideration or something, I'm not sure how to phrase it, but just reviewing the current increase in cases in the county. I know the plan is to open the school next week. I know that different counties, they all have options based on the guidelines Governor, excuse me, set. But I respectfully would like to ask that you delay the opening of conventional school for six weeks to see if our current 28% positivity rate continues. I think that opening, I've heard staff say, well, we know cases are going to go up when school opens. And the current uptick may be from, some of it's probably from church service, some of it's probably graduation, some of it may be from probably somebody went there. But when you, when you put, when you put everybody together, we all know it's going to go up more. So, and basically, that's, that's the sum total I, I guess I'm asking is just that you consider postponing the full open of the school. I'm not here to debate with anybody, that's just a simple request, as taxpayer, the grandfather, the father, brother-in-law, and several other relationships that I have with the school. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Okay, reports and discussion items, personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes, during closed session, I will bring you names for discussion for middle school science teacher, an elementary teacher assistant, the fall staff or the annual bureau staff for the 24th Century Learning Center, a new list of substitute teachers, the list of existing subs to be reaffirmed, and the list of volunteers to be reaffirmed.
Thank you. Well, it looks like, do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
I know, we've got to leave to Ms. Booth.
Go where?
We've got, Ms. Booth is going to talk to us.
Oh, I put it under the action items, I'm sorry. Ms. Booth, can you talk to us about the Graham County health status?
So, and I guess I'm really here, I can talk about health status definitely, but I'm also here just to answer questions. Ms. Odom has some questions, so if you guys have any questions, I'll use your pass. I'm not going to sit here and say I'm a clinical expert because I have nurses for that, but I know pretty much as a bill of business since January, pretty much anything that you can ask, I'll probably have an answer. And if I don't, we have to take it back to my nurses and I'll issue the answer. So, as far as it pertains to school, the biggest thing, I guess I'm a forest not trees person. In the grand scheme of things, COVID isn't behaving all that differently than our flu season is, or has in the past. What you're looking at right now with the rise in our cases, and we are having a steep rise in cases right now. We have had 27 positives in 21 days, which was expected. The health department is expecting us to hit 50 within the next couple of weeks, all right? And that's only 10 from now, and that was our original projection probably three or four weeks ago. Because our flu season runs a month behind. So, when the state spikes for flu season, which is usually mid-February, we spike for our flu season in March. So, the state spiked their cases about two to three weeks ago. So, we will probably spike hours in the next two to three weeks. So, that is a pattern that is expected, and it is behaving very much like other respiratory viruses have for decades. So, while it's concerning that we are spiking, please keep in mind that spike was very much expected. The health department is handling it fine. We haven't reached a crisis point or anything that we cannot handle at this point. So, while we are keeping an eye on the numbers and they are concerning, obviously, as any respiratory virus would be concerning, it's not become to the point where we are very, very concerned and we have a very large problem with it. Please keep in mind, as I released yesterday, it is widespread, which again is expected. People are becoming very tired. They're tired of dealing with it, heck, we're tired of dealing with it. But when they become tired of dealing with it, that's when they become a little more lax in their precautions. They travel more, it was summertime, everybody did their traveling, which is fine, but that's an accepted risk they took when they traveled. So, you're not seeing the mask wearing really in Graham County. Social distancing really isn't a thing, you know, it's not something, I don't know that they're necessarily not taking it seriously as much as they just aren't concerned with it, I guess. And that's a risk that they're just going to have to accept when they get up in someone's face and you're very, very close to them for a long period of time. You would pick up any respiratory virus that way, whether it be flu, whether it be COVID, whether it be any other type of coronavirus. That's the way you pick it up, is very close contact for a long period of time. So, it's like I said, it's not something we were not expecting at all. We were expecting this, it is behaving as we anticipated. As far as school reopening, you're as prepared as you're going to be. As Angie and I were discussing when I first walked in, the health department has been in regular communication with your administration for, at this point, weeks to months. You're probably as ready as you're going to be. Are you going to see a spike in cases? Probably. But I don't think there's really anything you could do about that anyway. You could delay the start of school, but you would just delay your spike in cases. It will eventually happen, just like it did last flu season. The health department was asked to close the school because you had a spike in your flu cases. It is a thing that happens with respiratory viruses. But as far as the precautions that the school has taken, I think that they're best one. The water bottle refill stations, the social distancing, the marking of the floors. I think your children will be more apt to social distance in the classroom than they will even outside of the classroom. Because especially with your high school students, they haven't exactly social distanced all summer. So, you also have to understand that you cannot control human behavior. So, you can control the child's behavior while they're inside of the school building, but when they leave here, you're not allowed to do that. So, I don't know, an exercise in utility, I'm not really sure, but you cannot control their behavior when they're not here. So, I don't know how much the social distancing, when they're away from here even happens. So, in my professional and personal opinion, their learning and their education goes with them for the remainder of their days. COVID is going to last a couple of years. I mean, it's not going anywhere, and it actually won't go anywhere ever. As I'm telling Ms. Odom, H1N1, which was 2009, is in your flu shot every year. It doesn't go anywhere. You just build up a tolerance over time as you become reinfected with different kinds of respiratory viruses. So, you know, we, we really try to take a trees or a forest not trees approach when we, when we analyze and when we look. So, yes, we are probably seeing a really high positivity rate right now. I'm not sure about the 28%, I haven't done statistical average on it. So, you also, our test results are taking anywhere from three to 16 days to come back. So, if someone tests positive or has their test drawn and it takes 16 days to come back, they've already come off of isolation and their close contacts have pretty much expired at that point. There's nothing we can do about that. That is a national issue, as I'm sure everyone has heard talked about on the news. LabCorp and Quest are your two major labs that run the coronavirus tests for us. And they are the two major ones for the entire nation. So, if they become overwhelmed, lab times get longer and longer. We have been able to utilize some smaller labs that can turn around the tests in about three days. So, we are slowly seeing that number come back down to something a little more reasonable, somewhere between three and seven days. So, we'll see. But we are keeping a really, really close eye on all of our, what we call our PUIs, which is Person Under Investigation, those who are close contacts, and our post-its. Our post-its do the daily phone call. We deliver groceries, we have gone to their house for testing, we, you know, patted their backs as they cried, and, you know, it's hard. So, you know, it's just one of those things that we'll keep at it. Personally, not all that concerned with the start of school. We're ready, and I think the school was as ready as it's going to be. And my nurses are ready to come out here and help. If somebody needs to be tested, we will be happy to come out here and test them. We have spoken with Harris Regional Hospital, they are looking at starting a strike team, which is in that if we have a whole classroom that we are really concerned with, they will send a team out here to help address it on the spot. So, we are building networks outside of Graham County to help support the school as it starts up. So, I really think we're probably in the best shape we could be for school to start. That's my log. And this has got a lot of, this is really handy, and hopefully the teachers will be getting a copy of this too. At the top, it says Superintendent's, Local Health Department's joint webinar discussion question. And they're really layperson questions in that they ask about facial, they ask about testing, they ask about social distancing inside of classrooms, they ask about mask requirements, reporting requirements, all that kind of stuff. I did get a question from a teacher yesterday that asks about the reporting requirements. If we have a positive student, Angie will be notified. If we have a positive parent of a student, we make sure they warn them. If they don't, Angie will be notified. So, those are two questions that we gave you yesterday. So, that's how we plan to handle what is those situations. Any other, that was a lot.
Is there a known about this virus that you can determine whether you can build up an immunity to this virus or not?
If it behaves like other coronaviruses, yes, you will build up an immunity over time. You will not be immune to it, though. You can be reinfected, yes. But if it behaves as it has with other coronaviruses, that reinfection is not as severe as your first time around. Yes, yeah, you keep a certain amount of immunity, that's the reason, like your tetanus shots, you only have to get one every 10 years. But your flu shots, you have to get every year, every year. Because respiratory viruses, for some reason, the human body does not keep that high level of immunity like it does other types of virus. So, that's the reason you have to get a flu shot every single year. You still keep a slight amount of immunity, but not the full on. And it behaves, and that's the same way with pretty much every respiratory virus. Is you keep a certain level, but not totally immune enough. You can, that's ridiculous.
I hate to do personal things, but I've had the flu one time, I'm 75, one time. And I was around students for 39 years. And I have not had the flu shot the last probably five years because the last flu shot I had, I got sick. How effective do you think the flu shot is?
I think the effectiveness of the flu shot, they're very honest with the flu shot, and they say it will not stop you from getting the flu. It just lessens your symptoms. The fact that you haven't gotten it and you talked for so long speaks well to your personal hygiene. It's very easy to prevent catching respiratory illnesses, but the issue is, I think, and I think some of the things that the coronavirus preventative measures have been really good. I think water bottle refill stations are an excellent idea to keep kids from putting their face on that. I think social distancing is an excellent idea. Kids and parents and teachers don't need to be up in each other's faces. You know, the clothing you should have been cleaning that well to begin with. So, there are some things that I think are excellent. So, I think that the flu shot is a really good idea for, for the elderly people that have any kind of immunocompromised. So, if they have COPD, if they have bad asthma, if they have heart conditions, things that would put a strain on their system if they got really sick. Those are the people that it's really good for, and they also do recommend it for people that care for the elderly. So, that way, hopefully, it will again lessen their chances of catching it, and if they do, it'll lessen the mortality.
I think you just called me elder. Mr. Nelson. Anybody else have any questions?
I had a call from a parent, and she was wondering if all her children, before they come back to school, are they going to be tested for COVID?
No, they do not recommend testing for the asymptomatic. And the reason for that is, they kind of wobbled back and forth on that one time, and then said yes, one time, and they said no. And the reason that it alternates back and forth is because of supply and demand. When they see a surge in testing, that's when those testing turnaround times go to 15, 16 days. So, in order to keep those that need to be tested, tested, and the turnaround time on them really short, they have to keep the testing at a certain level. When that testing surges, the times go out. So, they do not recommend it in the asymptomatic. So, if you brought all these kids to school and you tested 1,200 people in a span of two weeks, your testing times would go back out, and it would be two or three weeks before no results were returned. So, we still, we have stood by pretty much the whole time as far as the health departments concerned of just testing the symptomatic. Now, if you have a child that te, or a child that becomes symptomatic in the classroom, we do recommend they immediately get tested, and we can help make arrangements for that testing. So, and then to monitor the classroom for symptoms, because that's a question that will come up. You will have a child in the classroom that tests positive. We do not recommend testing that entire classroom because the incubation time for a coronavirus is up to 14 days. So, if that kid tests positive, we get test results in three days, you test the entire classroom, they may not have the viral load to test positive yet. So, we still recommend that they wait until they are symptomatic and monitor them for symptoms. Which if they're testing their temperature when they're getting off, or getting off, wanted to buzz, or out of their car in the mornings, you would catch them when that fever started to creep up. And the fever is the first sign before even a cough or a sneeze, it's usually a fever. So, if they catch it, when they step off.
And we are testing, we're taking temperatures as kids come into the school building, and we will have a visiting space where they can gather, and they'll leave building to building. Or if they do, they go into a certain room where nobody else is going to be isolated from all of the other members. So, we'll take care of that before they ever enter the classroom.
Oh, go ahead. You talked about kids being close for a long period of time in order to transmit. Do you have a timeframe like that?
It's closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes.
15?
Yes, it is, it was 10 at one time, they're finding that it's actually, it could be a little bit longer than that. And that is 15 minutes cumulatively, not at one span, it can obviously be one span. But if it's at the end of the school day, within six feet for more than 15 minutes, that is considered a close contact. So, we as the health department would probably consider that entire classroom in close contact as far as monitoring for symptoms and that kind of stuff. So, if we start to see a pattern they do, that's when they recommend the 14 days quarantine for close contacts. So, that is something that we will be keeping an eye on with the school.
What are you hearing about the timeframe for vaccine?
The vaccine is under production, development production, in that they have one, and it's under testing phases. Your vaccines usually take anywhere from two to five years to develop. This one's moving very rapidly, obviously in response to public outcry. So, it looks like the vaccine will be ready sometime this winter.
Of the cases in the county, do you track what happens to them?
Uh huh.
Okay, so, all full recovers?
Yes, yes, so. So far, everyone, we have had five hospitalizations total. They all have been discharged, and they all have recovered. So, we, we are seeing them obviously get sicker. And again, that's the progression of the coronavirus that we've seen move across the nation as it moves into its height. Those that are sick are sicker. We saw at the beginning a lot of mild illness or even asymptomatic that had been caught when the tribe was doing their community testing. Now, it's moving into hospitalizations, they're catching in the ER because they're having trouble breathing, things like that. But so far, so good, we haven't had any deaths. We have had a couple of some pretty sick folks, but so far, everyone has been released. That needs to be released, and they seem to be doing well, so. So far.
Can you break that down, is there age groups that seems to be hitting more so?
Actually, no, it's, it's hitting across the age groups, obviously our 65 and older's, but I even think some of our hospitalizations have been younger than that. I think more than one of the five have been under 65. As our numbers grow, we'll probably stratify it a little bit. We won't be able to do it on our daily graphic, but maybe like once a week we'll stratify and see where the age groups are breaking out. We're not really seeing pockets like some counties will see, kind of concentrated in an area. We're not seeing that at all. It's pretty much spread as far as addresses go across the entire county. We are having multiple people test positive from certain congregations. And the only reason we know that is because people will tell us. The biggest problem is they will not tell us when they've been to birthday parties, social gatherings, graduation, things like that. They won't own those. They will tell us that they, you know, had been to church and they had been undergoing testing and they tested positive, and they were under testing when they went, so we can track back those dates. But it's totally at the, what the patient tells us. So, sometimes we can get more information from them, and sometimes we can't. But really, within the congregations is where we've been able to really track it because they've been really willing with that kind of information, less so much with the social kind of information, so. And not really in particular congregation. Again, it's probably, it's been spread across several different churches. So, if you're members of those churches, you may have gotten that phone call across the prayer chain that someone in the congregation can test positive. So, they've been really good to work with on that.
Now that schools starting back, people have vacations. What are your suggestions that we suggest the teachers now when they leave the state or like to go on vacation or go to a family gathering out of state? Do they need to come back and quarantine for two weeks, the teachers and staff?
I would say that depending where they go, that's obviously going to be up to your school or what you decide to do. If there is the option of this quarantine even for up to five days, I discussed with Angie, maybe especially for your older grades, being able to have the teacher remote in. And obviously, that depends on the level of your TAs and your substitutes, whether or not that's even an option. And have the teacher remote in to teach. Anything to give that incubation period a little bit of time, so that way if they are going to show symptoms, they're going to show soon. I don't know, it would, I wouldn't say the full two weeks, and the reason I wouldn't is because they're not in close contact. So, you don't know for sure they came in contact with somebody with coronavirus unless they report to you that one of their family members or close contact did.
I mean, because I feel sure that half of Graham County, 75% of Graham County has been in school shopping somewhere.
Yep.
You know, so I'm going to, if we're going to do that, I mean, we're going to, I'm not going to have a staff here to start stealing.
Yeah. And I mean, again, that becomes a.
That's a choice we can make.
That becomes a forest and trees kind of thing. You know, in the grand scheme of things, how much difference would that make? You know, so that's going to have to be, again, it's closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes. So, if they are going in and going out, or they're, you know, shopping, they're milling, you would have more of an issue if it was a social gathering or something. And that's when you have more of the issue, not really the school shopping thing.
You said that we've got 35-plus positive cases, and I know of several people who have it or had it and had to go to the hospital. What kind of treatment was given to them so that they could be discharged?
It depends on the patient. Some of them only need supportive care in that they just need to be rehydrated, they need, you know, steroids, that kind of stuff to kind of give them a little bit of a boost. They are using, oh goodness, I can't even pronounce it, the word begins with R, it's like resimivir or something like that. That one has shown to be effective. We were speaking with Harris a couple, last week I think it was. That drug has shown to be effective, at least at Harris Hospital. I haven't talked to Earl Limer, but they are finding that that drug and the positioning of what they call prone positioning, which is laying on their stomach, is being actually more effective than the vent, the ventilator, different things like that. So, they're actually finding that certain types and positioning and the resimivir is working better than anything else. And again, that's the way it is with most of your respiratory illnesses. It's supportive care, hydration, steroids to open the lungs back up, things like that. There's not really a drug specifically that's really effective. Most respiratory viruses, it's just supportive care.
I was wondering that.
Uh huh. That's the reason they usually tell you, even if you have symptoms, shelter at home, which you should do with the flu and the colds.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe flu season will not be as.
That's what I'm, that's honestly what I'm hoping. I think I don't. I think, I don't, like I said, I don't think some of these are necessarily bad things to even carry forward past COVID. Being aware that if your child steps out of your car with a fever, they don't need to be there.
That's exactly right.
You know, being aware that your child needs to wash their hands and not be all up on each other is not a bad thing. So, again, it's...
That was a good skill in many ways.
That's, I think it'll be okay in a lot of ways. I think it'll actually kind of help with it.
Any other questions anybody has? Ms. Booth, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very, very much.
It was finally nice to see you.
It is nice to see your face. I, you know, I know Jack, but I didn't know what you looked like. It was very nice to meet you.
Absolutely. And if you need, if you need anything, Bobby's just kids. We're always there. The nurses can answer your questions. Or if you need me to come back or anything, just ask and I'll come back.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. You guys have a good one.
You too.
You as well, everyone. I appreciate it.
So, before we go into closed session, I would like to share related to this topic what's in your packet. You do have a letter from one of our staff members that she requests that you would read it on her behalf for discussing her concerns with the opening of school. In addition to that, a big stack of papers you have. I'd just like to share with you what that is. All of Grand County's recommendations come directly from the state and the governor's office from the North Carolina Department of Public Construction and particularly from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the CBC. So, the first thing in your packet is a strong schools NC. This is what we know about children and COVID. Information on the front, lots of resources on the back. This is all online too. So, if you want to get online, click on those resources. The next page, it looks like this. What families can expect for schools to open? I will have that ready to go out the first day of school. It talks about things like what, you know, blood is, what the symptoms look like, about face coverings. And to be clear, we are strongly recommending face coverings. There will be times that they will be able to have a face covering break because let's just be honest, everybody has to have that as an adult. You have to be able to have that. So, if there's a time that they can be six feet at least away from each other and have an opportunity to have a little face mask break, we will. They will be, they will be mandated when there's times that cannot be six feet away, such as in the halls. You know, they were at what in the hall, change class? Or, you know, making their way to the cafeteria, which they will be social distanced as they go, but just as they proceed. So, just to know that, to make that clear. We, it talks about what, you know, good hygiene and cleanliness is. Even talks about, have a talk with your child, got their feelings about this? Getting ready for school with full supplies, school meals. They give you the proper hand washing technique because it really makes a difference if you do that in the correct manner. How to use hand sanitizer when the second water is not available? Talks about riding the bus. What happens if a child gets sick or someone in their class gets sick? It goes over that clearly. Then, you know, we're gonna also be working with the health department. Younger children, older children, different things to talk to them about and questions that they might have for school leaders. So, there's that one. The next thing that you will find in your packet is one sheet that looks like this. This was sent out to faculty. It gives them options of scenarios in which they may have questions or concerns about their exposure to COVID and what their options are, their employment considerations, and any legal benefits or options if they're eligible to work. So, that was, this has been given out. Everybody that has been sent a link to staff already, but I will keep re-sending things because we know that not everybody gets their email. But it's there. The next thing you have is a rather lengthy document. It is the most updated version of the Public Health Toolkit. That is a, that's from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Many, many different things in there. Breaks everything down. Then I just talked about in the other version. This is a longer version of it. This is also available to staff and it's actually available to everyone. The next thing that you have in your packet that looks like this is the infection control and PPE guidelines that we are following from the state. This is where we have gotten all of our recommendations from and this is what our nurses and our staff will be following. The next thing in your packet is frequently asked questions from the toolkit that, the big toolkit that you have. And then there again, it's much like what Ms. Booth said. She just simply give detailed information about what happens if, if this happens. And this, you know, whatever the questions are. And the last thing is a big guide from the Department of Health and Human Services. And it was like this. Reference guide for suspected, presumptive, or confirmed cases. So, what happens if one of those situations occur? What's the protocol? And so, this is a very lengthy document. It talks about everything from during the school day, opening the school day, upon arrival, transportation. It is a nice flow chart in there. So, just, I think that's, it is really better as an online document than it is printed because the flow chart prints nicer and you can look at it online. But it's a very nice document and very easy reader friendly that everyone has had availability for and they will continue to have availability for. And that's what we are basing our guidance on. And of course, whatever we choose to do and continue to do, we can monitor and ensure whatever your decision is. The school will be back.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A, three and 143-318-11C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session to receive advice from M.L. Davis, attorney for the Grand County Board of Education, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined in and allowed by North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A, six and North Carolina General Statute 115-C through law.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Okay, we're back in open session. This night, we have action items, personnel.
Yes, sir. I would recommend to hire Ms. Mandy Adams in the position of middle school science teacher.
Do I hear a motion to approve Mandy Adams as the seventh grade science teacher in the middle school?
Subnude.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend Jordan Welch as the teacher assistant at the elementary school.
Do I hear a motion to approve Jordan Welch as a teacher assistant at the elementary school? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend the following substitutes to be hired. LaShawn Lambert, Desti Michelle, Crystal Ripper, Jessie Miller, Emmy Birchfield Hyvas, H-Y-V-A-S.
Do I hear a motion to approve the substitutes that were listed by Ms. Knight?
Subnude.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend the following staff, which are our current staff that is working with the after-school Twenty-First Century Program, has the following of the elementary school. And Ms. Beasley, I will, I will state Beasley, then I can give you a copy. Site coordinator, Wendy Upright. Tutors, Carrie Garland, Libby Evers, Tonja Stiles, Claudine Jones, Ashley Satterfield, Kristy Griggs, Vicky Birchfield, Shirley White, and Randy Farmender. At the middle school, the site coordinator, Rhonda Davis. Tutors, Kobe Williams, Angela Tyler, Lacy Stewart, Karen Lell, Becky Nichols, Brian Beasley, Felicia Moody, Sharon Knott, Stuart Nals, and Miranda McCann.
Do I, all right, here Ms. Davis, since Mr. Garland is the husband of one of those, how do I do this?
Mr. Garland has to abstain from voting on his wife.
Oh.
And you all approve it. He makes the motion to abstain from voting on his wife. You either approve it or don't, you know. And being a spouse, I'm done probably approving it.
What do I need to do?
Just make a motion that gives a conflict of interest for you to vote on your spouse.
Okay, I'll make a motion to conflict of interest.
And then the board decides if it is.
As the board, do you want to accept his abst, abstaining from voting? Or do you want to approve that he can vote? How do you figure?
I'm going to let him vote. I feel like he should be, fair and balanced.
Okay, the other, the other two ladies?
Let him vote.
Let him vote, okay. So, now my, my job is to?
Take the vote. The motion didn't pass, his motion.
Okay.
Shane's motion didn't pass because you all felt like he could be fair and impartial.
Okay, so now I just?
Take the vote. It's regular.
Oh, it's the regular vote?
Regular vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Garland voting on these people for the Twenty-First Century Learning Staff?
Actually, my motion could just be to approve the, his staff as, as...
Oh, okay, okay. Do I have a motion to approve all of the Twenty-First Century Learning Staff?
Subnude.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I wasn't sure how to handle that. Okay, go ahead.
No, actually. So, I also need, I would recommend that you reapprove the list of volunteers and substitutes per school as presented.
Okay.
And these would be volunteers and substitutes that have worked with us in the past and continue to be all of this.
Do I have a motion to approve the volunteers and substitutes? That, the list is very long, that we have had in the past. Do I have a motion to approve them?
Subnude.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Announcement, Ms. Knight?
Our next Board of Education meeting should return to a regular scheduled meeting on September first at ten AM.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Subnude.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.